Okay, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, February 1st, 2021. Would you all please rise for brief invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we just ask for a special blessing upon our world and in the community of Batavia in particular, as we continue to deal with the pandemic epidemic and the issues surrounding Corona. We're all trying to do the very best we can to overcome this, and we should all be very proud that the numbers of Batavia, while they are nearing 2,000 infections, still is one of the lower numbers in the region as far as communities with where their calculations have gone. So I appreciate all the cooperation that we've seen from the Batavia residents and trying to keep Corona under control. Tonight, as always, we want to ask for a special blessing on all those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered on these men and women as they go about their vital missions. Tonight, we ask for guidance and direction and understanding as we act on the items of business before us. And as I always say, under the idea that every member of the city council is here to do what in their own hearts and minds is in the best interest of the community. We just asked for all these blessings, and we ask that we all kind of remember all those around us and be ever considerate of the world that we live in and continue to make Batavia a very special place to live. Amen. Alderman Callahan, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Proceed. It asks the city clerk to please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knopp?
Here.
Chantet? Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Aaron?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley? Uer?
Here.
Jerome?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
I believe we have a complete city council tonight, am I correct?
Alderman Malley is absent.
Okay, that's right. So we have 13 present or 14, so we have the necessary form to conduct business. Moving then to item four, which is the reminder that we ask anybody that's going to speak to speak into their microphone, as this is being recorded for BATV and for other people who may be watching. Moving to five items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Do we have anything this evening? I would just like to make them make mention of the fact, I had several of you talk to me today, that they were some few folks were the opinion that we were going to have a some kind of a discussion tonight about the proposal that the city enter into potential lines of property for a public works expansion for the food pantry and other within our community. That is not on the agenda, and it is on tomorrow night's agenda for the committee of the whole. So that's where that business is rightfully published to occur. So I just wanted to let everybody know that that is what we will be discussing tomorrow night in the committee of the whole meeting. And any subsequent action would come at a future city council meeting following tonight. So there won't be anything about that at tonight's meeting. Okay, moving to anybody else? Anything they wish to add or subtract? I might note that on the council agenda for both the city council meeting and the committee of the whole, we are now showing at the top of the page that whether it's going to be a remote meeting or it'll be some other format. So if you check your agendas for tonight, they all should say remote as it does for tomorrow night's meeting being remote. So that means we will all be back where we are right now, continuing to have city business at hand. Okay, moving to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chantet is chairman of governmental services. Would you present this, please?
Can you unmute? I'm having some audio problems. I'm on now.
Okay, could you present the consent agenda?
Indeed. Your honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the Committee of the Whole minutes of January 5th, 2021; the Plan Commission minutes for December 16th, 2020; approvals, January 22nd, 2021 payroll in the amount of $1,26,130.30; the accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,907,627.80; the city council minutes for January 19th, 2021; Resolution 21-01-HR, execution, or sorry, extension of the police officer eligibility list; Resolution 21-02-HR, authorizing purchase of one 2021 Ford utility police interceptor, all-wheel-drive vehicle as part of an ongoing vehicle replacement program; Resolution 21-05-HR, authorizing extension of FF CRA sick leave; Resolution 21-03-HR, adopting the 2021 to 2023 Strategic Action Plan; Resolution 21-04-HR, approving task order number four, which writes our Engineering Laboratories, Inc., in the amount of $204,200 to develop wiring diagrams and procurement of five fabricated control and relay panels for the Paramount Distribution Substation; and ordinance 21-11, approving the purchase of real property comprised of approximately 6.6 acres identified by permanent index numbers of 12-18-100-12, 12-18-100-13, and 12-18-100-23. Your honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Do I hear a second?
Again.
I have a motion by Chantet, and who was the second?
Jerome.
Jerome, that we approve consent agenda for any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Chantet?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Callahan?
Hi.
Meitzler?
Hi.
Uer?
Hi.
Jerome?
Hi.
McFadden?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rosado?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Knopp?
Hi.
So the consent agenda is approved by a vote of 13 yes, no nos, and one absent. Okay, moving to seven, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody in the hall waving or anything?
Sorry, no, we do not.
Okay. All right, then moving to item number eight, which is the presentation report from the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. We have somebody online with us?
Yep, I'm here. Thanks, Mayor. Hi, it's Margaret Pro with the Batavia Chamber. You guys can hear me right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good, good. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. The 2021 Batavia Community Guide and Membership Directory have been delivered to all of our residences and businesses in Batavia and the businesses in North Aurora as well. I hope you all have seen it. The directory lists the members of the Batavia Chamber. If you are looking for a product or service, use the Chamber's directory. I recommend that you hang on to it throughout the year and use it as a resource. We are pleased to offer four scholarships again this year. The Chamber has now opened up applications to seniors at the Batavia High School District 101 to apply for any of the four Inspire scholarships. The scholarships are Inspiring Entrepreneurship, Inspiring Women in Business, Inspiring Career and Technical Achievers, and Inspiring contributors to a Batavia Chamber business. Each scholarship will be worth $500, and applications can be found on our website and submitted online. Businesses are busy redeeming their Chamber bucks that were given as holiday gifts this year, and they are being spent at local restaurants and retailers, we're happy to say. This is terrific because it's kept our money local. Remember, Chamber bucks are not only for holidays. You can use them throughout the year. They can be purchased for any gift-giving occasion, Valentine's Day, President's Day, whatever. Come on into the Chamber and purchase your Chamber bucks. The Chamber is helping to promote the support our Batavia Restaurants with We Side with Batavia Restaurants promotion. Eastside won last week by one order. The Eastside banner will proudly remain in front of the Batavia Chamber of Commerce office for another week. This week, we are featuring Aqua Viva, Tribella, Brianna's, Bocadillos, and Thai Village. Dine in now that mitigations allow, or carry out. Let the restaurant know what side of town you are from, and follow the fun details on Facebook. The Chamber is offering many educational and networking opportunities with virtual options to help support our businesses. We are continuing to provide many webinars for our members so they can be informed and educated on what resources are available to them. We have a lot of upcoming events in February. On Wednesday, February 3rd, that's this Wednesday at 8:00 a.m., we have our monthly Not-for-Profit Forum meeting. Wednesday, February 3rd at 3:00 p.m. and February 4th at 10:30 p.m., we are allowing, we are working with Aurora Convention and Visitors Bureau, presenting a new program to support our local restaurants, retailers, and spas. It's called Free Image Mobile Marketing, and it's a complimentary marketing tool. On Thursday, February 4th, we have our Chamber Bootcamp Series. It's Tic Tac for Business. Sign on and find out how to use Tic Tacs to promote your business. On Saturday, February 6th at 10:00 a.m., it is our first ribbon cutting of the year. We are cutting the ribbon at Soma Studios' new location above Six Plus Cypress. That's 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, February 6th, this Saturday. And Tuesday, February 9th at 11:30 a.m., we have our Batavia Women in Business Virtual Event. We're partnering with the Geneva Chambers Women in Business, calling it Double Trouble Networking. Tuesday, February 9th at 4:00 p.m., we have our Well-being Webinar Series, A Holistic Approach to Heal from Within, presented by Northwestern Medicine. Wednesday, February 10th at 8:00 a.m. is our morning networking event, BC Squared, Batavia Chamber Breakfast Club. Wednesday, February 10th at 9:00 a.m., we have a Human Resources Educational Series where we partner with BIA. The topic is Challenges and Successes of Remote Work. On Thursday, February 11th at 1:00 p.m., we have the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity presenting a Paycheck Protection Program webinar. Monday, February 15th at 4:00, we have, again, a series by Northwestern Medicine, Your Mental Health and Well-being Through Holistic Care. Wednesday, February 17th at 4:30 is our evening networking. From 4:30 to 5:30, we will be spotlighting Fox Valley Special Recreation Association. On Thursday, February 18th at 9:00 a.m. is our What's New in Round Two of the PPP. Monday, February 22nd at 4:00 p.m., Collective Trauma and Coping with Difficult Times, provided by Northwestern Medicine. And lastly, on Wednesday, March 10th, I want to let you know that we're partnering with the League of Women Voters of Kane County to offer the semi-virtual Batavia Aldermanic Candidates Forum, which will be aired on BATV. As always, I request that you follow the Chamber on Facebook and check the Chamber's website, bataviachamber.org, to register for our events. Sign up as a business or a community member and find out other pertinent information. Thank you for letting me present tonight. Does anyone have questions before I introduce my guest?
Any questions for Margaret?
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to now introduce Eric Strand. He is the owner of School Street Posters. School Street Posters is a map design and print studio that creates beautifully designed, detailed street maps of college towns, neighborhoods, and cities, including Batavia. Eric, I will turn it over to you now.
All right, thank you, Margaret. As Margaret said, my name is Eric Strand. I'm the owner of the company School Street Posters. A lot of your introduction, I've got repeated here in my own notes, so I'll just go through it really quickly. School Street Posters designs and prints artistic street maps of college towns, cities, neighborhoods that we sell through various online stores throughout the, or excuse me, various online markets, as well as our own website, and then about two to three dozen retailers throughout the country. Our product's pretty straightforward. I was going to attempt to share my screen, but I'm not seeing exactly how to do that. So I'm just going to quickly throw out our website addresses. SchoolStreetPosters.com is the best way to kind of see what we do, but I'll try and talk through it really quickly.
I can give you panelists to make you the presenter. You should see a pop-up come up?
Well, let's see. Yep. Let's see. I'm just getting a lot of system preferences that's trying to...
Oh, is it? Okay, I'm sorry.
Just to not hold up the meeting, I'll just keep going. But our website is SchoolStreetPosters.com. We design maps that are pieces of artwork. We are a graphic design studio that makes these maps. They emphasize the street names of the cities and towns that we choose to design, and then we print those maps. We screenprint them on really beautiful paper that we get from Michigan with really bright, popping inks, and like I said, sell them to retailers throughout the country. We also operate a small frame shop within our studio, because people like to give them as gifts. They're very popular as gifts. I mentioned that we do college towns. The graduation season is a very popular time for us, as well as the holiday season. Actually, we do have a map of Batavia, Illinois that we just released a few months ago. We actually just moved to Batavia in July from Chicago, and within a few weeks of moving here, the owners over at Hearth and Hammer contacted us through Instagram about putting something together for Batavia. So we got that put together, and they've restocked that several times now. I think they had pretty good success through the holiday season with it. We rent a 2,000-square-foot industrial condo space over by Kirk and Fabian. There we have a small graphic design studio, as well as a print shop. I guess what's kind of interesting about what we do is we operate a, what's it called, a Cameo 30 SS Graphic Screen Printing Press that was built in the 1970s. There are very few printing studios throughout the country or the world that operate those kinds of machines. You'll find all sorts of digital and offset printing companies all over the place, but not many that are kind of doing this sort of nichey, sort of dorky printing that we're doing. In terms of our economic impact, I've been in business for seven years now. As I mentioned, we just moved to Batavia in July. I came from Chicago. I was there for 12 years with my wife and two children. We bought a house here in Batavia off of Millview and 31. My son is a kindergartner at Alice Gustafson. My daughter is going to Batavia Nursery School. And as I mentioned, my shop is now located here at Kirk and Fabian within the Batavia city limits. So we are full-on in on Batavia, and, you know, wanted to join the Chamber of Commerce to try and meet other like-minded business owners, artisans in the community. COVID is, you know, making that a little bit difficult, but as I mentioned before with companies like Hearth and Hammer and some others that we've reached out to, my hope is here, is the weather starts to turn, get outside again, and hopefully do some more collaborations with the groups of people that are doing stuff down in the boardwalk shops and, you know, other craft-minded people here in the community. My business is, I am the only employee currently. I have had part-time employees in the past when we were in Chicago, and that would be the plan to be doing that here in 2020 and 2021, if the situation was a little bit different. Let's see, in addition to being a member of the Chamber of Commerce, we're also a sponsor of the Water Street Studios, so we're a donor for them. And just kind of generally, my background is in graphic design and online and e-commerce. This is one of many companies that I've taken online and kind of figured out how to take an advertising budget and make it work. And I've done some consulting with other companies over the years to kind of do similar things for them, people that are not quite sure how to get online, and not so much build a website, but navigate all of the specifics around how to sell online. So anyway, I appreciate you inviting me to the meeting, and, you know, I look forward to hopefully meeting everybody in person here at some point and, you know, getting to know more of the business owners in the community. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We have any questions? As the mayor, I would like to invite you, at your convenience sometime, to come down to City Hall. Let me know when you're coming and have you come up to my office, because as I'm sitting here, I can look at, I think I have four or five different aerial maps of Batavia from different timeframes of history that will, I think you'd find quite interesting. You know, before the town was developed, where the farmland was, and, you know, it's quite unique. So Batavia is a town that has some of that, and I think you would find it interesting if you haven't already seen some of this stuff.
I would love to.
Awesome.
Poster right now, he donated one to the Chamber, so we have one hanging on our wall here.
Okay.
Just wanted to share that.
Well, we would like to really have you come down, and you've got a business here that I think could really take off in our town, and the people you've so far partnered with are some of our top-flight people. So I appreciate your arrival in town, and we look forward to having you as a very viable business for many years in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, moving back to the agenda, we'll move to item number nine, which is Ordinance 21-10, an ordinance authorizing the city of Batavia, Kane, and DuPage Counties, Illinois to issue waterworks revenue bonds in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,425,000 in evidence of loans issued pursuant to public water supply loan program. Who's got this one?
Your honor, I do.
Okay.
So as we learned in committee, there is a bit of a lag time from when projects have their initial engineering cost estimates and the awarding of state funding, be they grants or low-interest loans. Staff has determined that it's possible the costs for this particular project could be a little bit higher, so they are recommending that we increase the ask with the state to 4.425 million. State says the money is available, and they are willing to accept an amended filing application. As we learned in committee, the interest rate on this is very favorable, 1.35%. And if the entire amount does need to be used, the impact on our budget is about $30,000 per year. So I guess I would move for approval of Ordinance 21-10, an ordinance authorizing the city of Batavia to issue waterworks revenue bonds in aggregate principal amounts not to exceed 4.425 million in evidence of loans issued pursuant to the public water supply loan program.
Second, Wolf?
Move by Alderman Chantet, second, Wolf, with the approval of ordinance 21-10. Any discussion from the council? You know, I'd just like to take a second and really pay some tribute to our Public Works Department. We have had very good success in our community in tapping into the state's public water supply and loan program in both the water and sewer areas, and we've been able to get some pretty low-interest, very good loans that have really helped us keep some of our other costs down and some of our rates down. So I just wanted to pay tribute to the Public Works, because the last time we did, when we did the water treatment plant that you've all, I think, now had an opportunity to tour, I was down there at one point when the state folks came by to preview what we had done, and they were very, very complimentary to me about the high quality of public works activity that they find in Batavia, and that we are such an easy place to loan to because our record of supply and demand and how we put the programs together and how well they're built, that we're modeled to them. And so I know some other cities that haven't had that success, and I just want to thank our Public Works for putting us in a position like this that allows us to so easily obtain these types of loans, because loans, I think, are going to get harder and harder to get as we move forward. But Batavia's Public Works has put us in a very favorable position. So I just want to publicly acknowledge that. Any other comments? Okay, the clerk called the roll then, an ordinance 21-20, authorizing the city of Batavia to issue waterworks revenue bonds in an aggregate principal not to exceed 4,425,000. Kirk called the roll.
Chantet?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Callahan?
Hi.
Meitzler?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Jerome?
Hi.
McFadden?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rosado?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Knopp?
Hi.
Ordinance 21-10 is approved by a vote of 13 yes, no nos, and one absent. Am I correct on that, the clerk?
Correct.
All right, very good. Thank you. Okay, moving to committee reports. Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Nothing to report, your honor.
Okay, Community Development, Alderman Callahan?
Nothing to report.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
You might have your microphone off, Alan.
Okay, now I'm unmuted. Just a reminder for everybody to make sure to clean out around the fire hydrants that are out now buried in snow, and also make sure the drains are clear on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a very wise thing to share with everybody. We probably should do that two or three times in a meeting, because there's, that's, we've had experiences where that's, where that's, good day, unburied.
Yeah, as we've seen on the news lately, there are a lot of house fires, it seems like, in the last week or so. And you can always see, you know, in the background, the snow pushed out around from where the fire hydrants are, where they're connected to it. So if we can save the firemen a few minutes, it'd be a good thing.
All right, Government Services, Alderman Chantet?
No report, your honor.
All right, do we have any other business from the city council?
Mayor, this is Amy.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you and give props to the Water Department. I've been on the resident end of the lead service replacement process, and from the postcard with the QR code to the survey to the prompt response and having Jeff down in my basement taking pictures, and then a DocuSign showed up to complete the process, like it was smooth and efficient and really well communicated. And I know it takes a lot of work to make it seem easy for the end user, so I just wanted to say thank you to Jeremy and to the department, because it was really well done, and I'm super excited to potentially get rid of that lead service line.
We'll pass that along.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Callahan?
Did we forget the Administrator's Report?
Well, I was trying to get that by mind, so I guess I did mix up the numbers. So this is Newman.
Yes, for the Administrator's Report tonight, I just have really a couple of items to share with you. This morning at 9:00 a.m., we had a Zoom meeting with all of the property owners and their tenants that are immediately surrounding the Future One Washington Place Project. It was an opportunity for us to sort of unveil our new informational website to them, and then also share all the details about the project that we know at this point. For those who are not aware, the city has created a website, onewashingtonplaceproject.com, that contains all of the information about this upcoming project, including the background and history of it. including the background and history of it, to the timelines of when we expect future things to occur, as well as the documents associated with the project, the redevelopment agreement, a presentation from the developer about the exact details of what, how the building will look, and what will be comprised within it. And then we also took questions from the audience and interacted a little bit with them about what their major concerns were. And I think they really fell into a couple of distinct categories. For some of those businesses, where they have their garbage collection will be affected by the perimeter fence that's around the project, and so we made a commitment to work with them to find a solution for them during construction. And then there were some other businesses that didn't exist at the beginning of this project back in 2016 that may want us to consider them for inclusion in the community garbage collection that is contemplated to be built within the new public parking garage. And so it was a real healthy discussion that we had, and we also shared ways for them and for anyone to keep in the loop about the project. If you go to that onewashingtonplaceproject.com website, you can sign up for electronic updates. Also, on FAQ page, there are many questions and answers, and at the bottom of the page, there's an opportunity to email us at owp@cityofbatavia.net to ask any questions that a resident or a business might have, and we will answer those, and perhaps if it's of general interest, we'll also add those to that FAQ page. But we also let them know about a couple of existing means for communication with the city, and one of those would be e-news. If anyone goes to the city website at www.cityofbatavia.net, there on the page, there's a button that's called e-news. If you click on e-news, you can put in your name and email address, and every Friday afternoon, you will receive an email with this weekly update of things that we think residents and businesses would be interested in. And we recently made a change to that document, just to make it really easy for people to find agendas for upcoming meetings, like this City Council meeting, or tomorrow's Committee of the Home meeting. We put a big button at the top of the e-news, that you just click that button, and it'll take you right over to the agendas and minutes, so you can find out what's coming up. Tomorrow, we have a kickoff meeting with Hitchcock. That is the consulting company that we have hired to assist us with the River Master Plan. So I look forward to sharing with you tomorrow evening, under project status, how that meeting went and where the project is planned to go from here. Couple of public works updates. The deadline for consultants to submit qualifications for both Mahoney Creek Tributary and West Main Street projects is this week, and we'll be reviewing those qualifications and provide recommendations to council in the near future. Electric crews are working to complete a new line along Pine Street from approximately Hart Road eastward to Redant. This line is part of a multi-year phased construction of a new 34-kV heater for the southeast side. And finally, water crews are continuing to work to identify the lead service lines, as Alderman Beck was mentioning, that can be included as part of the city's removal program with the IEPA. So if you have received that postcard, and we really appreciate if you would test your line, and if it is a lead line, we'd love to include you with this grant that we are replying for to help homeowners replace those lead service lines. And make sure to clear all the snow away from those fire hydrants. Thank you.
Any questions this evening of the city administrator? The reason I wanted to piggyback on her report was that I had the opportunity this morning to attend that meeting that she talked about on trying to prep the surrounding neighborhood to the Shodine Project at One North Washington. And I just want to commend Laura for the dynamic job that she did. She's obviously spent many hours in preparation. She had her support staff all there on board with her, and there was a number of the neighboring residents who called up with their concerns and questions, and I think everyone got a very solid answer, and they, several brought up points that probably hadn't been thought of before, and she wrote them down. I already learned later this afternoon, she was already working on some of those. So I just think it was an outstanding outreach of community connection and showed everybody that our city administrator really is trying to make sure that a project that many people have some concerns about is handled with the utmost amount of care and concern, and that we are here to do what is in the best interest of the community. So I just wanted to share that observation with the city council, because Laura did a dynamic job today, and I was just very proud of her. Anybody else? Anybody else have any comments from any other issue in the city? Okay, then I'll go to 13, which is the mayor's report, and I'll be very quick on this. I just, I'm going to begin this sad tonight with a piece of bad news, and it's, most of you know, this past week, we lost Robert Kraszek, who is, Bob was the husband of Coron Pirog, who was the newly-elected Kane County Board Chairman, but Bobby himself was quite a dynamic citizen in Batavia, because he and Corin lived down on South Jefferson Street, near the Bellevue Project, and he had a great appreciation for historical assembly of buildings and designs and whatever. And so in 2019, I appointed him to be a member of the Batavia Historic Preservation Commission, and he brought to that body some very strong background and understanding, and really, I think, took it to a new, higher dimension of perspective as to how they should move forward. And he was the right person at the right time, and I'm just so sad that we lost Bob, because he had some health issues, and he passed away last week. But he was a dynamic source. Interestingly, he served as a college professor at the Illinois Institute of Technology, and he taught classes in there around technology and how to use it to assess various building designs and styles. And he put some of that effort to work in Batavia in some of the things he did. So he's one of those people who left his mark, and although he wasn't here all that long, he set us on the right roads and did some good things. So I just wanted to pay a moment of tribute to Bob for what he did during the time he was with us. The other observation I would just like to make beyond, I'll be the third one to ask everybody to please dig out your fire hydrant if you have one in front of your home, because having been a former member of the Fire Department, I have some very fond memories of times when things were really going bad and in the way of fires, and it was in the wintertime, and I was there with, having citizens digging out hydrants as I was trying to hook hoses up to them. So I've had that experience, and that, as Alderman Wolf so ably described, it is a very daunting task when something happens in emergency fashion, and the fire hydrant is buried in snow. So again, I'd ask everybody to jump on that bandwagon. And the last thing, I just want to make an observation. We have in Batavia right now at least three and maybe four new restaurants, or maybe five, that are about to put themselves on the street in the coming year. And this past week, I was visited by a guy that tells me he's signed a contract to open a new restaurant in Batavia. He wasn't ready to have me announce it, because he said he had the lease for the building at his attorney for a review, and he didn't want anything said till after he got the go-ahead from his attorney. But while he was here, he made the observation that he has other restaurants in another location, but he said he was looking around for another place, and he kept hearing nice things about the Fox River Valley, and about the growth and the quality of the people, and the friendliness of the communities, and specifically, the cooperation that you get from the city governments. And so I think that speaks volumes about what Batavia is all about. We're going to see several new, nice restaurants opening up, both several in downtown, and the one I just talked to was on a Randall Road location. But we have some stuff that I think is in our blood out here, and we have gained a reputation to the big, wider world that Batavia can be a very supportive and friendly and open place to come and try to do business. And so I thank the City Council for your spirit of support in helping us attain that reputation, because it seems to be working, and we are getting people showing up. And certainly one thing that doesn't hurt Batavia at the moment is the ongoing construction now taking place out at Fermi National Accelerator Laboratory, because those in the restaurant business seem to be aware that Fermi, over the next few years, while it's being built and after it is being built, is going to probably entertain thousands of visitors from around the world to that facility, many of whom are going to want to eat someplace. And so I think we're setting Batavia up to be in a very good position to receive and operate that type of image in this world. So many times, we have to talk about the negative, and tonight, I just wanted to end on a positive note, because I'm very receptive of the nice comments that we are receiving about Batavia. And again, probably most to Alderman Callahan's efforts with the boardwalk shops over at River and Wilson. I've had several people in asking about those. I know there's going to be another awarding of spaces here in the next few days, and there's already a list, so I'm told, of people that want to apply to get in. So that's an idea that's working. And now, interestingly, I'm hearing from some other cities, fortunately not nearby us, but within the greater northern Illinois region, that want to know about this boardwalk shop thing. So Batavia's maybe set something on fire here, and it's probably going to spread to some other places, but we can duly, I think, take credit, thanks to Alderman Callahan and some others of you, that we got this thing up and running and going, and it has certainly made a very positive impact on Batavia, and certainly allowed us to display ourselves to a big, wider world. And if some of these folks, other towns, do start to open up a boardwalk shop, I'll be able to tell you, yeah, they were in Batavia first, and ask some questions. And so good things are happening here, and I just am very proud of what we're doing in Batavia these days. Anybody else have any further comments or questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien. I think it was Alderman O'Brien for adjournment.
It was.
If they ask the clerk to take a voice vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
He needs adjourned.
Aye.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.